So that's exactly what it was. I didn't even read the book. Yeah, because they told her over and over that that has nothing to do with it.
Okay, I think we will call the meeting to order of the Budget Committee for August 8th. We'll go ahead and start off with a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Real call, please.
Fitzwater, Graham, Hensley, Hussey, Kimna, Mahalovich, Prather, Schreiber, Ward, Wiseman.
Okay. Okay, tonight we have departmental budgets starting, and I have administration, mayor, council, city clerk, city administrator, city councillor, municipal court, HR, finance, non-departmental, NIT, fire, and public works are on the deck. Are you ever prepared? Okay.
Yes.
So, we have those departments prepared tonight. It could go beyond the allotted time, but that'll be your all's call whether or not you want to continue or not. So, with that, I think we'll go ahead and get started with the first one. That would be, would that be mayor council, right?
You want to do it, or you want me to do it?
You do it.
Okay. So, under the mayor and council tab, page 20 is the pie chart of the expenditures, with almost 93% of the expenditures being salaries and benefits. And the next page, page 21, the total salaries and benefits line includes not only the city council and mayor, it is also the elected prosecuting attorney. We made that change back in 2018, if you look back. So that is, we moved it out of the municipal court budget and into the salary elected officials line in the mayor and council. As far as the rest of the budget, besides the salary and benefits, there's actually about a $780 reduction in operating expenses proposed for the FY '20 budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, we'll go to the city clerk.
City clerk budget, there were a few minor changes just in some of...
Excuse me. If by, I would like to go ahead and start with any performance measure comments you might have. Okay, well, on all budgets.
That would be a little bit of Emily conversation. Any perform...
Steve, why are you finding that? Can I ask Marge a question while you're trying to find that? In regards to, you said the prosecutor was moved over to this budget item. What about the judges?
They're still in the municipal court budget.
Why did we decide to move one and not the other?
I believe there was, needs to be a separation. I think Ryan can expand.
Missouri court rules, operating minimum operating standards require that the court judge's budget be separate and identifiably separate than the prosecutor. It's, the court's concern is that there was a blending of roles, and so the municipal court judge at the time asked that one of them be moved out of the municipal court budget. So, we selected the prosecutor, since the city councillor's office is, has administrative responsibility over the municipal court. So, that is why we selected the city ju, or city prosecutor to be moved to the, to the elected officials budget line item. It could have been one or the other, but we thought maybe the judge made more sense to leave in the municipal court, since, since my office has some oversight over those operations.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, back to city clerk. If there's anything, I would like each department to address performance measures as they do their presentation, and the highlights of those, not line for line, but anything that sticks out or helps amplify the needs of the budget being presented.
So, for the city clerk and the performance measures, the outcome measures are mostly related and determined by comments and surveys of customers, people who are using the services of the city clerk's office. And in this particular case, those goals had been met and the actual have been met, and those really have been at 100%. So, from an outcome-based point of view, those are, are being met. And then from the efficiency measures, which are really just indicative of some of the workload kinds of things, again, there's not anything there that can, stands out as not meeting some of the anticipated projected goals there.
Very good. You got comments?
I was just going to say sunshine requests in general have gone up a little bit, and then tax bills for nuisances, I oversee that, and so that has gone up a little bit. Other than that, everything, everything's been maintained at an even level.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, proceed with the budget itself.
So, overall, the city clerk budget's $95,327.68, which is a decrease of about 2.5% from the prior year. As I mentioned, there's been some adjustments, mostly in contractual services. Again, those are just some estimates, and I really don't think there's anything else unless you want to go. Emily, if you have anything to add, or the pink sheets, you want to talk about those later, or?
No, I think it's fine to talk about pink sheets now.
I don't have any pink sheets.
I didn't see any, yeah, okay. I think we go ahead and address the pink sheets now. Even though our ground rules were, we are not going to use the parking lot until after all the departments are completed, as to be fair to the last department that would typically report. So, we will start the parking lot after all the departmental budgets are completed, correct? And the rule was, you should be able to come up with an offset, at least the next meeting, I believe, and I'll go ahead and keep those rules in place at the pleasure of this group. I think also it was mentioned that, should we cut somebody's budget, we ought to have, give them the opportunity to defend it, or give some sort of rationale if we've, if we've missed the, at least give an opportunity to react. Okay?
Can I just mention that the pink sheets are capital expenditures that have been identified, and as the departments go through, they can certainly explain some of the rationale and need for those, although they're also mentioned in the budget document presented as well.
They're very detailed, and I appreciate the work that goes into that. So, go ahead and proceed with the city administrator.
So, city administrator, from a performance measure point of view, it's similar to what the clerk was, that they are customer service-related, certainly some of that being input from the mayor and city council, and that has not been done yet. I think that's pending some action from the mayor. And, you know, overall budget, $286,671.76. Again, some fairly minor changes in the, from the prior, throughout the budget, made some adjustments, but fairly, there's just been a slight decrease, so.
Okay, thank you.
And no capital sheets, no pink sheets there.
Any questions for the city administrator? Seeing none, we'll move to the city councillor.
Performance measures for the city councillor's office have remained fairly consistent from the previous years. Our large, our large, kind of high-volume things that we do include both contracts and turning around sunshine requests, I think sunshine requests reflecting city clerks' comments, also very high for, for the law department, we review all those sunshine requests as well. Sticking at the 90-plus percent of contracts being prepared or reviewed within seven days of my office, that's, that's a reduction from, from what previous levels prior to my tenure have been, but where I would like them to be, I think the previous 99% was too high. So, those are at levels that I'm very, very comfortable with. I think that you would see, kind of on a pro-rata basis, of course, these numbers are through November 1 through April, on a pro-rata basis, that the number of our staffing councils and committees is bid up. Those are likely due to a little bit of tail end of the Charter Review Commission, and also MSP, in which both myself and paralegal is staffing those. So, those numbers are up, but fairly consistent with, with previous year's numbers. You would see the number of lawsuits challenging city ordinances or practice. For 2019, there was one, and we won it. So, that was a highlight of the year.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and proceed with your budget.
Budget is down just a little bit, going from 0.99% of the overall general fund, going down to 0.98%, so a slight increase. That was a result of the, the kind of go, second go-around for department directors, where we trimmed out a little out of the budgets. Mostly where I found that, that reduction was in special counsel services. If you recall, a couple of years ago, I asked for an increase from $5,000 to $10,000 for special counsel services, with the idea that that is, that is in large part of rainy day fund, so that way if legal issues come up, that don't necessarily require a large allocation, that we would be able to address those as they come up. I thought a reduction of that amount was warranted, given the exercise that we were going through. But, in large part, that the city councillor's budget has remained fairly consistent with previous years.
Any questions? Go ahead and address your pink sheet items, especially out of interest in 353.
Sure. This is a request to use some special counsel assistance to implement a chapter 353 economic development tool. Generally, chapter 353 is the more traditional sense, but these are used on a kind of case-by-case basis, and often what you'll see in chapter 353 corporations, and they are separate corporations, they are established by developers who want to use the chapter 353 tool in order to do economic development. There's a, there's a group of cities throughout Missouri that establish a more permanent 353 corporation that is controlled by the city, and redevelopment projects can be used, run through the chapter 353 process in order to gain tax abatement incentive for, for economic development projects. Another thing that is useful for chapter 353, especially ones that are controlled by the city, as opposed to a private developer, is that they can be used as a land bank, or as a, as a place to put real estate that the city could, you know, come into possession of, and isn't a part of the long-term real estate portfolio. And so, when the city obtains pieces of property, and then wants to put those back out for redevelopment, the 353 can be used to incentivize people to, to reinvest in property and, and return the property after tax abatement is, is, you know, runs its course, return it back to useful tax generation, back onto the tax rolls. So, there's really kind of two things you can do with it. You can do kind of voluntary outside-to-inside requests for, for economic development, and then you can use it also for internal economic development, where the city is identifying properties that it can obtain, and then incentivize for redevelopment. It's a very flexible tool. It's very similar to the LCRA program, which we use for a lot of economic development here in the city. Lot of the powers that are vested in the LCRA are similarly located within chapter 353. The only difference is that you're not relying on a separate political subdivision to, you know, to administer that process. You can essentially do it in-house. And then, the, the chapter 353 also provides for some more powerful, more flexible tax abatement tools, where you can do up to 25 years of tax abatement. And that, that's, it's actually set up, so it's 10 years plus 15. I won't get into the, too much of the details unless you want me to, but it is a more flexible, potentially more powerful tool, that in many places, the LCRA was replaced by 353 for that type of thing. So, while we certainly appreciate our partners at the Housing Authority and everything they've done through the three, through the LCRA program, this could be an opportunity to modernize some of our practices when it comes to tax abatement, and really put the city council back in control of how and when properties are required, and then, you know, and how they're, you know, redistributed back out to the, to the investing public. So, we thought it was a good idea, very flexible, to do a lot of different things. And so, the $15,000 is essentially to, to use some special counsel to get it set up, and also provide some training on how to implement the program on a, on an ongoing basis, because it's going to require not only legal work, but also work primarily from administration, from protective and planning services. So, this is essentially startup costs to get the program in place.
Any questions? The 353 was brought up in, in some of the meetings that I've been in, where we're looking for another tool, and with, with some of the disaster, tornado disaster, this might be another tool we could use, but I encourage people to be familiar with it on page 42, 3, 42, 41, 42, 43. Yes, Councilman Hensley.
If we allocated resources to this, what would be the timeframe for, from the start of budget year to when you would feel comfortable that we'd be up and running with this tool?
Four to six months.
And we're, okay. Trying to think of some flexible revenue options to help. Is it the kind of thing that runs through the city, or is it just legal services that are needed to be provided? And since it's got an economic development spin, I just wonder for some other approaches to getting this tool for the city.
Yeah. This is, this is one approach that, that we could do. We could, we could do it in-house. I have experience with 353, but I don't think I could do it in four to six months.
Well, and doing it in-house takes you away from other responsibilities that could potentially result in needing to contract out other work.
Right. This is, this, and I just want to be very, very clear, this is, this is startup cost. Once you run the program, other costs would be involved, but the nice thing about 353, because it is a economic development tool, you can many times, most often, get developers to pick up that cost. And it very well could be a situation where the city could be funding the startup costs, and then looking to recoup that, that cost back. It would probably be over a course of several projects, and probably several years to do that. And $15,000 is, you know, on the large scale, isn't a lot of money, but it could be a situation where this is an investment, where we are expecting a return, a direct return on those dollars. So, it'd be a long, it'd be a long-term to get that back, though. You want to chip away at that pretty slowly. You don't want to saddle a developer with that upfront cost, because that wouldn't be fair. It'd be the first one, would be unfairly bearing that burden.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, I think you have one more pink sheet item.
Right. The second pink sheet I have is for a summer law clerk. We had a summer law clerk this summer. It was something that kind of came up of interest after last year's budget cycle, but, so I don't know who, who here was, had the pleasure of meeting Zeb Charlton, who was our law clerk this year. He was a student, law student at Mizzou Law. And Zeb came in during the summer, was here for eight, eight weeks, and provided a lot of value to my office, and did a lot of valuable work, primarily in the areas of the dangerous building code, which is currently in front of the city council, pending on that's agenda, and also in the area of medical marijuana. He provided lots of valuable work. This is a positive way to both, to positively impact our workload capabilities, get some work done, especially long-term projects. And then also, in, in the spirit of the interim program, giving some young people exposure to municipal service, and particularly municipal law practice, with the hope that they will take an interest in municipalities and local government law with a, with a view that that could be a future career choice for them. I think it is a benefit to, to not only Missouri municipalities as a whole, but to Jefferson City seniorly, to increase the people that are interested in practicing municipal law, and would like to make a career of it. The more, the more good lawyers that are good at municipal law, the better for everyone, because good lawyers make good law. So, that, that's kind of the, the theory behind it. It was a positive experience this year. I would like to continue that program. It just, nothing but good came from it, from, from, from where I sit, and so that is why the, the pink sheet is here. This is a bit of expansion, I believe, from what we saw this year. I believe this number is for 10 weeks, as opposed to eight weeks, but, you know, we did eight weeks this year. I could definitely get another two weeks' work out of the law clerk that we had.
Good. Thank you. Any questions with regard to city councillor budget? Okay. Yes, Council Lady Ward.
Counselor, was your law clerk part of the internship program, or was it part of our, was it a separate line item?
It's, it was a separate line item. It was not as part of the internship program. There's, there's a lot of the programs where the, the law, or sorry, the internships were kind of introduced to a bunch of different departments and did a few different things. The law clerk didn't do that. We, we put him to work pretty, pretty much full-time. So, it was a different experience, similar, similar theory on why to do it, but the experience was probably pretty substantially different from what our interns. And you have to remember, law clerk is a law student, someone who already has a bachelor's degree, college graduate, as opposed to the interim program. That's still someone that's working toward their, you know, their undergraduate degree.
But it's still kind of views, viewed as an internship for a law student.
Summer intern, summer law intern, it would be a perfectly fine, you know, alternative way to describe the program.
Right. I was just, I know we are not currently funding the internship program, so I'm just trying to see if, if we found a way to fund that program, if you could take, you know, benefit from that with getting a, a law clerk through our conventional program.
So, so the conventional program, no. I really, I really, this is going to sound terrible, I really don't have any use for someone that's an undergrad.
Well, no, I'm not saying they would be. They would still be, they would be a law student, and, I mean, unless there is some legal definition that a law student couldn't participate, participate in an interim.
No, there's no definition that says you couldn't do that. It's just our current program calls for undergrads, so we'd have to change the parameters of that program a little bit.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I guess to follow up, where did the funding, like, we, I can't remember, did we fund this individual directly last year, or were those resources that we allocated in the broader intern line item?
So, no, they, the funding for this program did not come in any way from the internship program. They were, I believe, funded primarily through Steve's exercise of, of savings at other places in the general fund.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? If not, it's...
Sorry, there was, there were some, I believe there was some funding out of planning, since there were some particular projects that planning wanted accomplished that we thought we could accommodate, and ended up did, did accommodating.
Good. Thank you for the clarification. Municipal court? Who's taking that?
Oh, that's me.
Okay.
Still me. All right. So, municipal court, once again, performance measures on municipal court are fairly, fairly consistent. The number of cases per FDE on a pro-rata basis were up a bit from the, from the previous It's important to remember that in 2019, we had a, had a, had an election where we, the city, the people of the city elected the then-current city prosecutor to the municipal judgeship, and then elected a new city prosecutor. And with that was some fairly significant changes on how the, how the court operates, and I believe that those are going to be some positive changes that will see some positive impacts. One thing I would like to call your attention to on the page 45, is the number of cases dismissed by the court for lack of prosecution. That was a, that was a performance measure that was added fairly recently, at 42 cases last year, or sorry, the previous year in 2018, in fiscal year, at least through April 30th, the reporting period, that number was zero. That's something we're very pleased with. And so, that was a positive, positive change coming out of the municipal court. Pardon me, lost my place a little bit here. As far as the budget goes, budget, similar to my, to the city councillor's budget, is a slight reduction in overall general fund impact, also the result of a little bit of the, of the savings exercise where we went through, the department directors went through the budgets again. One thing that was and continues to be in the budget, in the 2019 budget and continuing through the 2020 budget, is funding for a temporary judge. Because the city prosecutor was elected as municipal judge, Missouri Supreme Court rules disallow the new municipal judge to hear any cases that were active while, while the judge was prosecutor. And so, what that required is for the city to retain the services of a temporary municipal judge, to hear those cases that, that Judge Stumpy is not eligible to hear, because they were around while he was prosecutor, he prosecuted them. And so, that has continued since, since the, since Judge Stumpy took office back in April, and those numbers are slowly starting to get right, but we could, we anticipate that that could take up to a year for, to get to a situation where we don't have a whole lot of those leftover cases that, that were there when, when Judge Stumpy, you know, changed from prosecutor to judge. So, you know, that is a bit of an anomaly in the municipal court, in the municipal court budget. That is, I believe that that is within the line item designated as professional services. If you take a look at page 47, the 2019 budget for professional services was adopted at $5,000, and went up to $16,000-plus dollars as part of the current budget, and remains at $13,000. That is, that's the line item with that, where that item is, is located, and so probably the most significant change from last year's budget to be aware of.
Councilman Graham?
Just a quick question. So, when Judge Walker was elected to his, to his position and... So, when Judge Walker was elected to his position and became the interim judge, was that judge paid at the same rate or same amount of money as?
Yes, so, for the, for the period in which the temporary judge, and that was basically January 1 until mid-April, that was a net zero transaction, because anything that was going to be paid to the regular municipal judge was rather paid as part of professional services to the temporary. So, that was a, that's a net zero transaction. But, once the, once Judge Stumpy took the bench, there was both the regular municipal judge salary and then the professional services that were paid on an hourly basis in order to retain the temporary judge. And that temporary judge isn't there all day. It's usually just in the morning, and those hours are starting to go down.
Thank you. Councilman Prather?
I just had a question on page 45, item number seven. There is a big discrepancy between 2018 actual parking tickets and projected, about $10,000, $10,000 tickets. What would explain that big increase?
I believe that is related to our new, our new parking ticket administration software that we are starting to put into place. We are expecting some increased efficiencies, I think, significant increased efficiencies. And so, I believe that municipal court worked with the parking division to come up with that number, and I suspect that a large part of that is that new system. All right, thank you.
Councilman Graham?
I had the same question, because it seemed like since we stopped, I guess, putting the marks on tires, how will we increase, because we've started to decrease the amount of tickets we write?
So, it was a bit of a happy circumstance. When the, when the cases came down that said that marking tires was a seizure of property, parking, parking division director, Mr. Smith, came to me and said, "Well, when are we going to get rid of this?" And I said, "We need to do this as soon as possible." He goes, "Well, that's great, because we are phasing it out anyway." They got new software to do license plate recognition, as opposed to doing the old-fashioned marking, and so that was something that was going to get phased out anyway. And so, I don't think that there is going to be any type of impact from not having that tool, the tire chalking, available to us anymore. We were going to go to a new system. The court cases merely moved that up like a month or two, and we were ready to, we were ready to implement that day one.
So, that's, that new system has been fully implemented?
As far as I know, I think it has.
Someone has probably already said this, but I don't know the answer. What is the new process? Are they taking pictures of the license plates?
I don't know if it's pictures, but it's a, it's a visual recognition software. So, I'm not sure if there's an actual picture taken, as opposed to it reads it, downloads some information, and puts it in the system. I don't think it's actually photos in any way.
Is that data stored or kept?
I think that'd be something you'd have to direct to the parking division.
And I can try to help out, yeah. Sorry, I didn't chime in earlier, I was looking through my budget here. But, I don't think we've actually got the software implemented just yet, but the, it's much like a reader, you know, it can go along and read these things and do some automated things, and that's our goal, but still, still working on that. But, you'd be surprised how efficient parking officers are with their memory, you know, like you and I talk to each other just in plain English, they can talk in license plates, it's amazing. And, because that's what they do all day, they monitor license plates, they make notes, they may take a quick photo of them or something, but they do go about, and, you know, it's just a different line of work, so they're used to that. And, yeah, I think, you know, the chalk, chalk marking was going out anyway, but I don't know if that answered your question, I can't remember who asked it.
Does that mean that we're capturing electronic data and storing it?
I don't, I don't believe, we're not doing that now.
Are we going to be doing that?
I'll have to get back to you.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Yes?
Could I also just, I think if you're looking at the 2019, that's also a partial year number.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get there, but my thing is not working well. What page are you on? 45. That would be my problem.
I'll give you a minute, if you need to.
Rick, Councilman, can I just ask, on that projected number for 2020 of 22,500 tickets, who arrived at that number?
It's municipal court staff with conjunction of parking division. But, municipal court staff. And I reviewed it.
Yeah, so, and Steve is right, we're looking at parking tickets, right? That's what you're asking about, yeah, where it's about, it looks like it's half, is that what you're referencing? Yeah, that's a half year when we do these, so that's, excuse me, jumped off again.
He's looking at the projected versus the actual.
Oh, I'm sorry, the thousand?
On the right, yeah, the far right and the far left.
I'm still on the right spot.
Yeah, yeah.
I keep messing my, which one is the, oh, that one up there. Yeah, yeah. No, I, yeah, I think then Ryan's comment is good, they're probably relying on us getting that implemented.
Okay. I think we do have a parking, did we already go through the parking division? We haven't gotten paid.
Part of Public Works.
Yeah, I've got a broad overview of it later.
Okay, very good. If there are not any further questions, we'll move on to HR, I believe is next.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's there, I just finally got there.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you. As far as our department highlights and measurements, start with that. Our wellness program continues to thrive with over two-thirds of our employees and a number of our spouses participating. We increased the wellness incentive this year, and we switched from a biannual program to three phases per year. This encourages and rewards employees throughout the year and puts a greater emphasis on those employees with lower health scores. We also were awarded the American Heart Association's Workplace Health Achievement Silver Award for our comprehensiveness and quality of the organization's workplace health program and for the overall heart health of our employees. As far as our health insurance, self-insurance fund, it ended 2018 with a balance of approximately $800,000, which is about $200,000 short of our desired fund balance. Our utilization for 2018 was at 86%, which included two claims over our stop loss of $100,000. This year, we're averaging 93%, including our large claims, but without our large claims, we're just under 70%, which is really good. Our dental insurance is averaging about 89% utilization for 2019, and our vision is averaging about 107% right now. As far as turnover, citywide for fiscal year 18, it was 7%, and 40% of that 7% was from retirements. We completed almost 200 recruitments this last year with over 2,000 applications for employment. As far as our budget itself, budget highlights, our total mayor-approved budget for 2020 is $318,248. Of that 93% is personnel services, 4% is human resources department expenses, and 3% are citywide expenses, which we oversee. The budget overall is about a 9% decrease from the approved fiscal year 19 budget. Some of those changes, the line items, postage, printing, operational supplies, dues and publications, tuition reimbursement, background checks, and professional services line items were all lowered. The Human Relations Commission funds changed from $5,000 to $500. And then our special events line item increased by $300. That's the money that the Employee Involvement Committee uses for special events for the city employees, including the Public Service Recognition Week in May of every year. As far as our pink sheets, the items the department requested?
Excuse me, I got one question on the line items. Personal, professional services was $20,000, then it got cut to four. What's the difference there?
The online training.
Oh, that was the, then it went to a pink sheet then? Okay, there you go.
So, our pink sheet items is the online, the learning management system, an electronic performance appraisal system, an awareness campaign, a human resources assistant position, additional 4,500 to bring the Human Relations Commission back to the current 5,000, a city match of $25 per month for deferred compensation for employees participating in that program, and the citywide internship program. Our top priority, and it's listed as one of our goals in the budget, continues to be a learning management system. I do feel that we're well behind our peers in offering citywide training in all areas, particularly those areas like customer service, communication skills, interpersonal skills, supervisory skills, safety topics, diversity and inclusion, harassment, et cetera. And a learning management system would also allow us to be able to have our policies and procedures out easily accessible for our employees and make it to where they can sign off that they review those regularly, annually, and allow us to send out that information anytime changes are made.
Thank you, excellent. Steve?
I would also want to mention that Mayor Turgeon felt that the, for the Human Relations Commission, as well as some of the other commission, that they had some specific projects they wanted to propose to the city council. They could certainly come and make that proposal to you all throughout the year and provide some specifics at that time.
Councilman Prather?
I have a question on page 50, it's more complicated to process.
Wasn't that long ago that we, I believe, bought some software that would allow these applications to be automated, that we wouldn't, it would seem that we'd be processing more? Does it have more to do with just lack of applicants, or why would that number have gone down from 2018 to now if we had that software? It was at, you know, 22,318, now it's, you're projected to be at 1,800.
A lot of that is, some of that is the way that we are doing some of the part-time positions, particularly for Parks and Recreation, we're leaving them open for a longer period of time, so people aren't having to reapply as often. So, some of that we were doing, they would apply once, and then they would, the Parks Department wouldn't necessarily go back and look at those applications that maybe had been turned in a month earlier, and so they were applying again. So, I think that's a big part of it. It also, I think part of it's just a tougher labor market, and we're just not getting the applications. That software has been implemented and is working wonderfully.
Councilman Hinsley?
How many, there's a question about the citywide, how many participants did we get this year?
We had five participants this year.
Did we, did we see more than five, or were we?
We had funding, I think it was for, I think it was...
It wasn't pretty good, I think, especially if you're on the bike, you know.
Yeah, we ended up getting five, and that is based on the departments that wanted them and the applicants that they got for them. So...
Were there no other applicants, or?
Well, for example, let's say like in human resources, we had a number of applicants, but we only took one position in human resources. So, the departments that had the applicant, or had the interns this year is human resources, IT, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, and Engineering.
So, staff just decided that they didn't want to have interns?
Some departments prefer not to have interns, right? Other departments would take them if they got applicants that were, had, were seeking positions within their field, if that makes sense. So, for example, if the fire department maybe would have taken one, had they had somebody who was seeking some type of a fire service degree. But, we didn't get anybody for the fire department.
Then the departments that had multiple applicants, if that's a, typically, would take more.
Right, like in human resources, I wouldn't have had the space for multiple ones.
Any other questions? One question on your online management system, have you, did you identify a product?
We have, I mean, we haven't, we haven't done a formal RFP or anything to be able to do it, but we have, we've viewed numerous different systems and have really looked a lot at them, so we have a very good idea of exactly what we would like, and we would be, we have a lot of contacts in those areas now where we could do it fairly quickly.
Good, thank you. Any questions on that otherwise? Thank you very much. We'll move to finance.
Okay, the finance department, the measures on page 63. So, our major outcome measure is the GFOA Comprehensive Annual Financial Reporting Award and the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award. The GFOA budget award, at the time that we produced this book, we had not gotten notice, but we have gotten notice, so we have received that award for the 2019 budget.
Congratulations.
And then under the efficiency measures, just kind of wanted to point out, you know, the percent of voided accounts payable checks, that's kind of an indication of that things are processed correctly, timely, and so we like to keep that around that 1% mark or below, and I think we'll be successful with that. And then the fact that utility bills are processed within three business days 100% of the time. So, moving on to the budget itself, total budget for finance is $954,902.9. A little over 92% of that is salary and benefits. There were a few lines that changed, the section of materials and supplies went down about 1,600 from last year's adopted budget. Our training and education line is where we took a large part of our 7% reduction. The audit line, however, is, has increased by almost 10,000, and that is because we're required to have an OPEB audit every year now, according to GASB rules. And I have no pink sheets for the finance department.
Okay.
You'll be answering questions.
Any questions for finance? Thank you very much. I think we can move into non-departmental.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take that.
And then go ahead and address the gap financing while you're doing that, too. Go ahead and identify, I'm going to have a question about the gap financing in non-departmental.
So, a non-departmental, the gas there is the Housing Authority, and we do have an offsetting revenue line for that line item. The general insurance line has a significant increase in it this year. The LCRA reimbursement that you're talking about, the gap financing, that has the $259,000 in it for that Phase 1, there's no new money being proposed in the 2020 adopted budget for that. A little bit further down, that $185,000 is for the Chamber for Economic Development, that has not changed. that has not changed. And then on the next page, the building and grounds, there was a significant reduction in that for that 7% exercise.
And maybe just some further explanation on that. That really wasn't an estimate of need. I mean, it really was kind of what we used to balance out some of the other funding challenges in the budget. So that number's not what we, I think that number should be significantly higher. Sorry.
Okay. Any questions? Left, right? Seeing none, thank you very much. We're headed to information technology. Continue.
I'm sorry, could I just mention one other thing as well?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, on public art, similar to what I said before for the commissions, that that was just one where I think the mayor thought, if there were some specific requests or projects that came in at a later date, then they could certainly come to council and seek that additional funding.
Very good. You may get in some, we may be getting some calls on those, so that's a good thing to point out. Thank you.
So, yeah, and it really wasn't a thought about any of their existing programs or projects or anything like that, it was just a matter of thought that it would be an opportunity to come to council and make that specific request along with the other commissions as well, if they had some specific projects.
Okay, thanks. Okay, let's proceed with IT.
Okay. On page 72, you'll see the IT measures. The, under the performance measures, we have a help desk ticket system where the survey respondents rate the service as good or above. You'll see a goal of 97%. Our goal for 2018 was 94.4%. We don't have a half-year marked number in there because we're having problems getting reports out of the system. The reporting part of it is Crystal Reports, and it's an old version of Crystal Reports, so we are trying to get a workaround to get the numbers out. And moving on to the information technology services budget itself, the total budget is $1,026,976. 74% of that is Personnel Services. We do have a large professional services and software maintenance contracts in this budget, so that makes up another big piece of the pie on contractual services and repairs and maintenance. On page 77, you'll see just some reductions in the materials and supplies, and some reductions in the contractual services, and reductions in repairs and maintenance, and those are all kind of to satisfy that 7% exercise. We do have two IT and one GIS-related pink sheet items. The first one is to upgrade the city's email system. We are, we currently have Exchange 2010, and that is, that will be out of support in 2020, so at some point, the city is going to have to upgrade to a newer version. The second component is, or the second pink sheet item is the upgrading to Microsoft Office 2019. We currently have Microsoft Office 2010, and this product is going to go out of support at the end of 2020, so at some point, we're going to have to update that as well. And then the last one is for the GIS system, you know, how extensively that was used as a resource in the tornado and the flood. Well, we currently have four citywide licenses that are shared among 10 to 12 people. Well, that obviously wasn't sufficient when we had the disaster, but this, I won't read the pink sheet, there's a lot of information in there about upgrading to an enterprise agreement, which would give us unlimited licensing and a lot more support in additional licenses. And when we do the new flyover for the images, the LiDAR images, the image server that goes along with this new enterprise agreement is also, can handle that better and have better images, so. Unless there's any questions.
I think, seems to me, well, first of all, in the notes, one of the, one of the things that said you was working on redesign of the website, and while I understand that as an IT function from an engine, you know, getting, getting it to work, but it seems to me more of a marketing function that we need to also engage in if we're going to be improving our website. IT could handle the, you know, what happens with the servers and all that, but it seems to me that a rewrite of the website is kind of a marketing function. I am real super concerned about these pink sheet items. Your email system, we all use it, so we know it fairly well, works really well for me, but the fact that in January 14, 2020, that will go out of Exchange 2010, will go out of support, and then again, your office will go out of support in 10/13/2020, so we're going to have to bite that bullet eventually. I failed to ask any other departments thus far, but I do want to recognize the efforts of your IT staff during the tornado and spending maybe all night working on the DIS and upgrade that, and did the department IT specifically, did they incur any costs associated with the two disasters, or was it just doubling up staff time?
Their time.
Time, yeah. Well, thank you, and thank them for us.
Yeah, a lot of time.
And just by the way, if you haven't explored, on our website, there's a, there's one click to look at what the impacts are of a certain flood levels. Well, they also did a layer of flyover with the tornado damage, so you could click it off and see what it looked like whenever that image was taken, and then the day or two days after the tornado. So it's real informative for a person that wants to see it from that point of view. That also shows our sirens on it. You can take that layer off, so it's pretty informative, a piece of work they did.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. Councilwoman Weiss.
Do we have the opportunity to charge for use of the GIS system?
Actually, when, when the GIS was initiated with the city and the county sharing some of those costs, that was something that was looked at. Our GIS manager has brought to get forward proposals to both Steve and I for billing, and we've had discussions with the county on whether or not they would support that. So we are looking at that. There are different layers of services that could have different costs associated with it. There would still be that free layer for most citizens, but for professionals like realtors or property appraisers, or there might be some additional enhancements that could be made that then could be a charge committee associated with it. We have a proposal for that.
How long do we think and tell will, that will actually be proposed to the commission? Or, I mean, is that, is that something that's coming up to them, or is that something we're just sort of floating around and we just don't have a timeline for it?
The latter.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're skipping a tab, please, and moving to fire. Are we ready? Over there. Chief?
Yep. I can, I guess we'll start with performance measures there. And when we look at the performance measures, there's a pretty wide swing sometimes when we have just a few fires that do not remain confined to the room of origin, and so that's what you see there in the 2019 actual. Our goal is 65% containment to that room of origin, and you can see that we've actually increased that for next year, but in our mid-year actual, we're at 50%, and just a handful of fires that may or may not be within our capability to control to that room of origin. And there's many factors for that, and there's really no way to, it's, while it's a measure, it's probably an imperfect measure in terms of outcome. Many variables impact that based on configuration of the room, contents of the room, you know, human behaviors, lots of things. We can do everything right, and we can still not confine a fire to the room of origin. So when we look at measures and performance and that kind of thing, we have to kind of keep that in mind. And I would say that echoes also for the structure of origin. Now, we've been pretty fortunate there, in that we've had 100% containment to the structure of origin both last year and then also this year so far. So I just, I mentioned that just to say that there is no perfect way to measure performance on the fire ground, but those are two of the better ways that we can at least quantify it. So as you move through there, we also look at training and the amount of training, the volume of training that's documented, and we're doing, I think, pretty well there for a mid-year number. I feel like we're in a good place there. As you move down the list into efficiency and effectiveness, one of the things we did this year was we decided to specifically call out some things to bring them into focus. And I'll also mention that we go through these performance measures twice annually. We do it with all hands, so we have an all-hands meeting in the winter and then one in the summer. And we look at these, and we describe them and talk about them, and we also try to brainstorm, you know, what we can do to address things or make improvements, even if they're very small improvements. And so as part of that process, you know, we look at all the different things that increase time, and the reason time is so important for us as an industry is that, you know, fire can double in size every 30 seconds, and so time is critical there to be effective and then to keep our folks safe. And also in terms of a medical response, time is tissue, whether it's brain tissue or heart tissue or bleeding control, you know, time is the key. And so these time measurements that you see here are cumulative, and that's why we break them out the way that we do. Two of them, you'll see that number three and four are new measures, and that's because we have specifically identified those, and we're calling ourselves out in that. And that, what I mean by that is, the turnout time is the time it takes from the time we hear the tones drop in the station to the time we have all our equipment on and we leave the station. And so sometimes it takes some time to equip all that stuff, depending on where you're at in the station, get your gear and equipment on and leave. The other one there actually crosses over beyond the fire department, it goes actually to dispatch to our police communication center, and it's the time from the minute they say 911 is your emergency to the time that they drop the tones and we get tone alert and voice to dispatch the unit. So those two things are new for us. We've called them out specifically, even though they are, one of them is not necessarily within our department, it does impact our overall response time. And they have, as you can see, a cumulative effect, and in fact, I have one correction to make. If you were astute and you were adding up these numbers, you realize that we had a one bad digit there. And so if you go down to the actual 2019, number six, total response time in minutes, that should not be 5 minutes and 40 seconds, it should be 5 minutes and 30 seconds. So we're 10 seconds off there, got one digit wrong. Please make that correction in your book, please. And then you'll see that those add up to the 7 minutes and 8 seconds. Now, our goal is to be at 7 minutes total, so from the time that someone says 911 is your emergency to the time that the air brake is pushed on the truck and we're there, we want that to be 7 minutes total. And that's, that's pretty aggressive, and you can see that we're not there, but we have made significant improvements. I wish I could show you these for the last five years, and it would paint a little bit different picture, and that we're continuing to push some of these things to try to shave seconds, and hopefully those seconds add up to something a little more substantial when they all come together, so. Any questions on response times before we move on down the list?
Seeing none, let's proceed.
As we go to the final, the final performance measure workload, service indicators, one that we're a little bit lax on there, that we need to make some headway on at the remainder of the six months of this year is the number of public education and prevention events. We're at 77 there, and you can see that that is not at the midway point for where we want to be. And really, there's two things that impact that. One, the more training that we do, the more calls we run, I'll just be very honest and say that sometimes prevention activities, inspections, sometimes those things are pushed kind of a little bit to the, to the back. And we also have a very large push in October, which is our fire prevention month, and that's when we really count a lot of our fire prevention activities, so that's when that number will go up pretty significantly. So we, we know that we're needing to make some ground up in those, but typically, we see more growth in the, kind of the second half of the fiscal year for both those numbers. Any other questions overall on performance measures?
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Just had a question. These are citywide, right? Do you track it by station just to get comparison numbers? And I know there are extenuating circumstances and some that probably impact that, if there are things that we can do, but are you comfortable across all the stations?
Yeah, in fact, we break it down not only by station, but by company and by company officer on the shift. So we have essentially 21 zones, seven companies and three shifts. So a company officer's in charge of each one of those zones, and they are held accountable as part of their process for how many inspections and what events they do, and making sure that they're hitting the desired number, both monthly and then also quarterly.
And just for future reference, when a new station comes online like this year, does that help improve efficiencies in areas that impact the citywide numbers?
Yeah, it does. In fact, you know, none of these numbers would impact, were impacted by a new station two because we opened it May 22nd, so these are all pre that. But specifically, Station 2, we think, will have a positive impact because some of our longest response times were east. Because of the way the city grew and annexed to the east, you know, that was our longest haul in terms of geographic distance. And so we believe not only are we going to be a little bit better strategically located on major artery highways, but also a little bit closer to some of those longest response times that were really impacting our numbers negatively. So, so we do expect to see a little bit of an improvement with new Station 2.
If I could just ask one more question. With the new high school coming in, any anticipated impact there, or too early to tell?
That's a tough one. I mean, certainly that's an area, in addition to St. Mary's, the property there, you know, it's a very congested area and additional, you know, service implications with that. You know, we do have the lot there that is, for public safety purposes, that was given to the city for public safety use until 2022. So there's a property there that was dedicated, donated by St. Mary's developers at the time of that development, and then it was extended, and that extension goes through 2022 for a possible future fire station location. And it does fit within the, I'll call it the zones or the circles, the coinciding circles of where we would need to put a station geographically to be, to be close to not only that new infrastructure, but also there's a hole there that was pre-existing before all the development.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead and proceed with your-
Can I just mention something? That one of the things I like to say is that performance measures really aren't a measurement thing, they're a management thing, and it's a great opportunity to be able to have management kinds of discussions, and I think Chief Schofield just mentioned some examples of how he uses those, and the other department directors do as well, to have those management kinds of discussions about procedures and operations and those kinds of things, not necessarily to put something in place just to try to meet a particular number.
Very good. From this chair, it's very much appreciated. Go ahead and proceed with your budget.
Okay. Looking at the different operational line items on the budget, you know, as far as what to call out specifically, I don't know that there's anything in particular, things that might catch your eye would be probably the medical claims and services line item, and I can give a brief explanation for that. We were very fortunate last year in that we received a grant, a sizable FEMA grant that not only covered the workout equipment and wellness equipment, and also some increased additions to our annual physical, health wellness physical, heavy metal testing that's required for hazmat teams and things like that. So we were able to cover a lot of those operational costs last year, so you can see that in 2019, it was 10,000, but previously, in 2018, it was at 36,900. So, you know, we had hoped to continue that program as we have, it's been very successful, and I'll just, without getting into privacy information for our personnel, you know, we have caught many things early. It is- So, you know, we had hoped to continue that program as we have, it's been very successful and I'll just, without getting into privacy information for our personnel, you know, we have caught many things early. It is a specific protocol for firefighters based on increased risk and cancer risk and things like that. And so that, that annual physical is very thorough and it, it is both blood work, extensive blood work and also includes performance measures, actual physical performance measures and also some other overall wellness type screening things. And so we've, we've caught a lot of things early and while it may not be publicized and we wouldn't want to publicize a lot of those things, I can tell you that it's been highly effective. And so being able to do that last year with the grant, we were able to offset some of those funds and didn't need as much in that account. Now, the, the reason we still had a little bit in there is we still cover our new hire physicals with that, with that line item as well. So when we have new folks come on, they have to receive a, a new hire physical from our local occupational medicine provider. So that's probably one thing you, you might've had a question about as you look through those, that list. And, and we still think we can get pretty close to doing that. What we'll do with 30, with the reduction this year is we'll, we'll realign that blood work panel since we had a very extensive test last year. We'll realign that to make it fit the budget. So we think we can still make that work, albeit maybe a little bit less than, than what we were able to do last year. Other items in the budget that might be of note. Sorry, I'm using these glasses for the first time this year. I'm kind of feeling a little old.
You get a pass.
But the, the clothing expense, you know, the bulk of that really is our personal protective equipment. And the more we train, the more calls we run, you know, the more wear and tear on that equipment. And, and it is, one ensemble for one individual firefighter is, is over $2,000. And unfortunately, that's just the cost of doing business to protect our people. And it doesn't last that long and it is something we, we try to keep clean and we try to make it last as long as we can, but it's, it's just a very expensive ensemble of personal protective equipment. And so that's the, that's the bulk of that, that line item and clothing expenses. Any other questions with the operating budget?
Council Lady Isom.
I noticed a $10,000 increase in the maintenance agreements and I was just curious what, what we're, what is causing that increase this year? It's a couple lines down from the clothing.
Well, two things. The first one is because with the new station two generator, we added a, a dual fuel generator there that's added to that for maintenance agreements. And then also moved into that line item was the policy, annual policy subscription for Lexipol, which is a process we started last year and, and we're still implementing this year. And what that does is Lexipol primarily got their start in, in the police world of doing policy, recommended best practice and policy. And they have also spread into, in the fire service, a comprehensive overhaul of, of policies and procedures and best practices. And so we've started that process and we've implemented a portion of that and we're continuing to work on implementation this budget year, this budget cycle. And what they do with the annual is they, they look at a few things. They look at changes with revised state statutes and how they might impact your policies. They look at new OSHA requirements. They look at current best practice evolution and NFPA updates. And so with that, that process, they send it to you and they say, this is the recommended change we would make to your policy. And then once those changes are made, it allows us to send that out to our folks. They can, they can read it, they attest to it. And then on a periodic basis, they're given assessment tools. So they, they have to pass a test or a quiz that says, you know, this new policy, do you understand this, this and this and understand that this is what it means? And in this scenario, how would you react and that kind of thing? And so it's an automated process to do that and it counts for training hours for us. So it, it really has become not only something that is, is positive from a management perspective, but also from a line perspective in that there's consistent and well-understood, verified and legally defensible policies for, for us. And so it's a continuation of that, that process that started last year. I think it's about half what the initial implementation was to continue that ongoing to get the updates, the, the revised information and then also to track it and make sure they attest to it. One other thing, the city administrator wanted to mention was also in there, I believe it is in, how do I find it?
First aid supplies.
First aid supplies. We were notified earlier in the year by Cole County EMS that they, they no longer wish to provide us nitrile medical gloves. And it may seem like a small thing and it may seem like a small expense and, and it is, but when you add it up, when you think about 5,000 calls annually and two-thirds of those being medical calls with at least three personnel, they're single use. And so that, that adds up pretty quickly. And it has been our practice with EMS, you know, we've been doing EMS for over 20 years, 20, 25 years, that the EMS provider provides a certain portion of our medical supplies, the consumables, if you will, the, the things that are single use items for the call. And then they charge the patient. Well, that has kind of evolved over the years and we've kind of gone back and forth on what we provide and what they provide and what they can bill for. There's a concern that EMS, that our current EMS administration has about providing those gloves to us from a liability standpoint. There are occasionally reactions to, to different types of gloves. We, we don't, we haven't really noticed a problem with that, but, and then there's also, I guess, if someone were to be exposed, depending on who provided them the personal protective equipment, the gloves in this case, they, they, they wish to no longer provide that. So knowing that, we said, well, we, we need to figure out some way to still provide that. We, we don't really have a choice. We've got to protect our folks. So that's why we put it in. But I actually think, we actually ended up moving it to a pink sheet, is that right? Administrator Crowell, yeah. So, so we had put that in under first aid supplies and that's where we have the $8,000 request. But then it was moved from there to a standalone pink sheet item. Now, at the rate of $2,200, the, the amount that was in there previously was for other things that we had always bought. AED pads, AED batteries, you know, some other tourniquets and things like that that might not be consumable on a case, by case patient basis. So we don't really know what it's going to cost. We have an idea what we think those gloves will cost, but in the scheme of things, we're going to have to buy them somewhere is what it really comes down to.
It's item number seven under the pink sheet, so you'll be addressing that soon, I assume?
Yep.
Yep. Any questions? Council Lady Ward.
I mean, I don't know how anyone can answer this, but how can that be a pink sheet item? I mean, you guys have to have them.
Well, yeah, we'll have to move, once the 2,200 is, is used up, we'll have to move money in there from somewhere else.
Or there may be further conversation with the county. They've got some additional funding sources and I, I don't know how realistic that is, but there may be.
So the county is okay with supplying them from a?
I didn't say that.
No, no, no. From a liability stand, I mean, they pulled back because of financial. It's, I, I mean, which was, weren't there two possible sources that you could get those from? You said one was financial and one was liability?
Their, their concern, I think, is probably split between the cost and then also they, they cite a bigger issue as liability, them providing it from a liability perspective. That's, that's what I'm told is their primary concern.
I think it's going to have to come from us.
I will say that, you know, since we've had that conversation, we've, we've been working towards a solution. And one of the things we've tried to identify is if that could be maybe specifically called out in our memory and a misunderstanding with them, that the liability is assumed by us in a, in a better way. And that's something we're trying to work through. I, I don't want to make any promises, that, that has not happened yet. But that's what we would advocate as a possible solution.
I think you can go ahead and proceed. I think you're on the pink sheet.
Pink sheets?
Yes.
Okay. Just going through these, you know, in a, in kind of a 30,000-foot level, the, the radios, it's been on there for a couple of years. And what that would allow us to do is right now, we, we share radios between shifts and so we have enough for one shift to have portable radios, a radio on their person. And that works in routine operations. When you have a major event and you call everybody back in, it, it doesn't work. So, you know, we just, we've experienced that recently. It is, it is our intent, it is our desire that each person has issued their own. And so that whether they are working or not, they have it available to them. And when we call them back in to work, they have one already assigned to them that's not shared between shifts. So that represents mostly portable radios on their person, but also mobile and mobile is mounted in the vehicle. Mounted in the vehicle, it's just the ability to communicate on various frequencies for interoperability. Primarily, we added, a couple of years ago, we added a new frequency to our list that allows us to operate better in large buildings, 800 megahertz frequency. And so our old radios can't do that, including the mobiles, only the new radios can. So they're very expensive. And it's whenever you read a, a near miss or line of duty death report from NIOSH, they always, always say number one is always communications. Failure of communications equipment is almost always listed. So it's one of those things that we, we know is a priority we're making do with what we have, but certainly it's not where we want to be from a radio communication standpoint. Number two, ladder truck personnel, and that can, that may seem kind of confusing and what that really means is that right now, when we're at minimum staffing, we have 19 personnel on duty plus a supervisor. And so that is the minimum that we are at, at, at any day. Now, if everybody's there and nobody's on vacation, nobody's sick, nobody's on military leave, nobody's on maternity leave, nobody's on any other type of leave, then we have 23 plus one. So we would be saying that by doing this, we would hire three potentially, but then have minimum staffing raised by one. And what that would allow is for one of those two ladder trucks that only has two people on it to have a third at minimum. And really that's what you need to be able to operate that ladder truck efficiently under fire conditions. So that's not a, that's not a new conversation that's been around since I started here 20 years ago, being able to have three people on that ladder truck so that it can operate the way that it's intended. But we understand that, you know, staffing is always a, always a challenge, so. The Hyde Park burn building replacement, we've talked about that for the last couple, three years as well. Currently, we cannot burn in that building. We, we, we are not able to. It's, it's in a condition that it's not safe and it's been evaluated by a third party and we've been told that we can't burn nor can we allow any of our mutual aid or county partners to, to burn in there as well. So that is something that we are going to have to address sometime in the near future. We try to get creative. We use smoke machines. We've got some Connex boxes out there that we're trying to burn inside of. You know, so we, we try to do what we can, but eventually that building is going to need to be replaced or significantly remodeled so that we can use it for live fire burn evolutions. Station four, station four on Ellis Boulevard is just, you know, real quick, it's, it was built in 1969. It's, it's, it's one of those, it only has one bathroom. And so when we have male and female firefighters there, our concern really is that it's not appropriate facilities for male and female firefighters to share one bathroom. And a few other things we could do there, this is more of just a remodel, it's not a full wholesale replacement, obviously, for that amount of money, but we, we certainly would like to do that. The other thing we'd like to do in, in that remodel is to put a, a storm shelter in there. We got lucky with the last tornado, it just jumped, I mean, literally right over the station. So we, we were living right. But, but honestly, we, we feel like it should have a place for people to go during storms. So that's, that's also included in that, that remodel. Office support, we talked about for the last, as long as I've been here, you know, the last six, seven years, talked about trying to get a part-time office support. We have just one administrative assistant for the entire department. So for 75 uniformed personnel, we have one full-time office support administrative assistant. The ballistic protection, you know, we, we trained and just, just recently, in fact, we just did full-scale exercises with law enforcement around the county along with county fire departments for active shooter environments. And it is the best practice for firefighters and medical personnel to operate in the warm zone. So they're there under the protection of law enforcement personnel, but, but we're not waiting and, and we're able to, to go to the patients and do patient care in the warm zone. To do that safely, we need to have ballistic protection, both helmets and vests for, for firefighters. I think the vehicles, we've talked about, you know, there would have been three vehicles on this list, but we were able to, to secure one during the budget year, which we greatly appreciate. So we really only have the two requests in there. We talked about, I believe, the gloves. And moving on to fire marshal, safety officer, grade 22. You know, this is just a, a staff person within the department that could serve more deliberately on fire investigations really is the key. That, that really is a standalone, in addition to other duties we, we propose here, that really is a, a pretty significant undertaking with fire investigations. And it's something that we've talked about in the past, while we do it, we probably don't do it to the degree that we should. And we can't rely on the state fire marshal. They're only going to come in really when, and there's a fatality or, or a major loss of, a major dollar loss involved, so. The fire ATV, I know it sounds expensive and it is, you know, it's just, that's just what it costs to, to, to put a, a high-pressure pump, skid unit on the back of a, of an ATV so that it can make remote access. We, we needed this for the air show that didn't happen, but we also would look to use it for the, for the island, for remote access and lots of other places too, so. Retrofitting the fire sprinklers, you know, that's just something that we, we really want to practice what we preach and, and believe strongly in fire sprinklers and what they do. The roof for station one was something that we put out to bid this year and we, we were, we've been told for many years it needed to be replaced and, and we've patched it. And we went out to bid this year at probably the worst possible time, just to be honest. We, we timed it with all the other repairs and there is no roofing company in town that's looking for work. They all have more than enough and they told us that. In fact, they said, you know, this, this bid is, is high. And it is. It was double what we expected it to be. And so we just said, we're going to try to make it work, hopefully through the winter and maybe rebid sometime during the next fiscal year and try to get a more competitive price. And maybe even try to carry over some of our building and grounds money from this year to help offset some of that cost is our intent. The last item is the fleet replacement pay it forward. When, when many of us went through the, the fleet purchase this last time, one of the comments that I heard from many of you was we should have a way that we can put money into a fund and then potentially build that fund so that when it comes time to buy trucks in 10 years, we have money set aside. And so that's, this is my attempt to start that conversation that, you know, if we put a little bit aside each year, we might have money and we wouldn't have to potentially borrow to do that and be able to pay outright and get back on to a more normal fleet replacement 10 years from now. So that is what that is. Happy to answer any questions on any of those other pink sheet items.
Mind just giving a summary of impact to your department with regard to flood and our tornado? Cost-wise?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, especially as it deals with costs too.
Yeah.
Certainly appreciate the fire, fire service.
Yeah, our, our overtime costs were, I would say, significant during the time of the tornado and then for a short time after for the flood. I'm thinking for about two weeks, maybe about a week and a half post tornado, we, we had the flooding staffing, which we spoke about, which typically consisted of an additional three to four people that would staff that boat and go proactively out during high water events and be ready to respond and did respond to, to multiple events as well as some routine type of transportation needs there. So. So, you know, for us, it was primarily overtime. There were a few incidental equipment things, you know, we had to, we replaced a motor that was a boat motor. But overall, you know, we had some gear and equipment issues, but for the most part, I think it's primarily personnel cost.
And I think some of the other departments appreciate the ferrying by the fire department to their facilities in North Jeff City.
Happy to do that.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. Chief, does that conclude your presentation? I have a question for a topic that we've already covered tonight, if I could go back to it for a second. If Chief Schofield doesn't have any other items to share.
Is that dealing with Chief Schofield or a different?
No.
I have a question with Chief Schofield.
Oh, please.
Why don't you proceed?
Okay, thank you. Chief, I know that you have the Local 671, and I guess my question is, how involved were they with you or the Local 671 president sitting down and coming up with these pink sheet items? Was, did you guys have conversations together or are there some things in which Local 671 wanted to see make it to the pink sheet items that was not brought to this list? So, I guess my question is, did you have a sit-down conversation with the president of 671 to say, you know, "This is what we feel our needs are based on what you see and are some of those things that they wanted, if any, are a part of this, these pink sheet items."
I don't know that we did a formal sit-down from a labor management perspective, but what we do, our practice has been for the last five years, is that we sit down with command staff and then they go back and talk to the captains and have captains' meetings, you know, per shift. And then those captains talk to their personnel. And so, it's an ongoing discussion. There's nothing in this list that I provided to you that they haven't seen, that they've not had an opportunity to offer feedback on. And certainly, there's been some back and forth on that. In fact, you know, there's five things that didn't make the list, you know, just because they didn't rise to the level of priority, I would say. So, you know, in terms of getting feedback from all personnel, I feel comfortable in saying that we got feedback from everybody. Certainly an opportunity for that feedback. Now, how they prioritize those things, I'm sure would be dependent upon, you know, their individual perspectives. And certainly, they may have different perspectives on that. But I feel really good that we do discuss these things and as part of our, I mentioned those semi-annual meetings where we have all-hands meetings, you know, we dissect each one of these things and we talk about it. And so, they have an opportunity in multiple places to give their input and to be part of that process.
That's good, because sometimes when management sets these things, it can cause a rift sometimes. I'm glad to hear that they were at some point involved, so.
Yeah. And then, I would add, the other thing we do is we have a leadership meeting that involves all the captains and all the assistant chiefs, usually in the spring, and this year we did it, I think it was in March. And that's a major topic going into the budget season of, you know, let's prioritize these things and determine what's important.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Any other questions for Chief Schofield? Seeing none, thank you very much. Councilman Hensley had a question.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to ask one more question about this intern topic, and I'm sorry to keep harping on this, but I think it's important to provide some, you know, even symbolic gesture to young people coming out of college that we care about them staying here. And I think it's more than simply a recruiting tool for city government. I think it's a good recruiting statement for the city as a whole. So, if we funded, sorry, in terms of line items for human resources, is this in part-time without benefits? Is that where the interns would be? Okay. So, we funded $43,000 for that line item last year, in the current fiscal year. And I know that was, you know, four and a half more interns than were originally requested. We used, or we employed five interns. So, is there a substantial amount unspent in that line item right now? For this year?
I think Sheila's looking it up.
Great.
Right? Oh, you're not? Oh, I'm sorry. Is that something you can look up?
I don't know.
Okay.
Can we find out what the current spend is on that line item and specifically for the funded pink sheet item from last year for interns?
Sure.
And if that money no longer exists, can we find out what it might have been spent on and when? Great, thank you.
We're at the point, we're an hour and a half in-plus, and we're at the point where Public Works was prepared to give us a portion of their budget. I yield to, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, we do have Fire Museum. Yeah, thank you.
Not much to say there, just, you know, continuing to work on that project. Probably the most significant thing to report is that we were able to find the original 1966 snorkel truck chassis that our current snorkel is remounted on. And so, we're going to bring that back and we're going to cut it so that it's low enough the kids can play on it inside the museum. So, that'll be a fun thing that we'll be adding to the museum next year, so. Other than that, budget-wise, I think it's pretty straightforward. Any questions? Happy to answer.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Yes, Council Lady Ward.
I just want to comment, I think that's a great asset to that area and I appreciate you guys involving the community and opening up to the youth and their families. I attended your Halloween trick-or-treat event and it was well-attended.
Yes.
And we really enjoyed ourselves.
We're excited to see that area grow and improve and certainly, you know, a lot of exciting things in the vicinity, so, yeah, we hope to be part of that, continue to be part of that.
Thank you. I think now we are, we were prepared, we're an hour and a half in, it's the pleasure of this group, that Public Works was prepared to do their budget in two parts, part one tonight and part two on the 12th. What's the pleasure of the group?
I'd say we're just waiting until the 12th in here altogether.
We have a consensus? I see some nodding. Okay.
Yeah, listen, we're in some type of time crunch, we have to get it done.
So, you want to just go ahead and jump to planning and protective services? I thought I'd wake him up.
Right. It seems like we're moving along pretty good though, Councilman.
Good.
So, I would be comfortable with waiting till Monday night.
Matt, I think we got you up for a third time. You good with that? Great, great. We'll give you full attention now, as if we wouldn't otherwise.
So, we will go back to police next Monday too?
Let's see, what's on the dock is Public Works, police, airport, wastewater, transit, parking.
Okay.
Okay, okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we stand adjourned.